We're going to call a meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say amen. Let's have a rule call.
Member Steele?
Here.
Member Lyon Welch?
Here.
Member Frederick?
Here.
Member Bill Spurrow?
Here.
Member Holbrook is absent. Member Bean? Here. Member Lake?
Here. Thank you. Next, we have the request for public participation forms. Anybody wish to address the board? Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from August 5th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Any additions or deletions?
Yes, we have two personnel amendments. We're adding the resignation of CHS English teacher Ariel Norris effective 8/15/2025 and resignation of Kirsten Dancer from Elementary Behavior Support effective 9/5/2025.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Communication? Personnel recommendations. You're up again. All ready.
Relative to certified staff recommendations, the Board of Education accept the resignation of Jordan Runyon, first grade teacher at Max Larson Elementary, effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to appoint the following teachers to the Lake Middle School Curriculum Chairs: Stephanie Augenbaugh, ELA; Jill Senick, math; Brian Pritchett, social studies; Jason Brantley, science; and Jessica Bachelor, electives chair. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to appoint the following teachers to the elementary curriculum chairs: Nicholas Haberl, Ashley Metcalf-Macklin; and Julia Stettler at Max Larson Elementary; Nicholas Bachelor, Lindsay Dixon; and Michelle Fonderin at Jefferson Elementary; Amber Coleman, Gail Rogers; and Alanis Sfransky at Lakeland Elementary. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to appoint the following teachers to the high school curriculum chairs: Kelsey Hazel, ELA; Nathan Waterbury, math; Brian Stevens, social studies and advanced coursework; Cody Fishel, science; Katie Jewell, enrichment. The Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of high school English teacher Ariel Norris effective August 15, 2025. Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Kirsten Dancer from the elementary behavior support position at Max Larson effective September 5, 2025. Relative to support staff recommendations, the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Darcy Seeler for the part-time bus monitor position effective immediately upon board approval. Relative to extra duty assignments, the Board of Education approved the recommendation to employ Brian Kelly for the extra duty assignment of seventh grade boys' B basketball coach effective immediately upon board approval. And the Board of Education approved the recommendation to employ Brian Zachrich for the extra duty position of middle school cross-country coach effective immediately upon board approval.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Next, we have the acceptance of an approval of gifts presented by member Bill Spurrow.
Recently, the administration was made aware of the following gifts offered by the following donors. Recognition and approval for acceptance of the gifts are being sought. From the EB Klein Good, Better, Best, there's a $1,000 grant in monetary funds to, first of all, Rebecca Thompson of Lakeland Elementary and also to Rebecca Thompson at Jefferson Elementary. Another donor, Brian Stevens, a CHS teacher, has donated $500 to the CHS tennis team for a tennis ball hitting machine. BFA Software donated $1,386.16 in monetary funds to the Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center. Voltech donated $500 in monetary funds to the ABC Challenge. Branch County Community Foundation enrichment grant donated $818.95 in monetary funds to Jamie Schwartz at Max Larson. The Branch County Community Foundation enrichment grant donated $1,600 in monetary funds to Becky Simmons at CHS. Robert C. Redmond II donated $1,000 in monetary funds to the CCS opening day breakfast. Kellogg Community Credit Union teacher grant donated $400 in monetary funds to Jenny Blakely, who is the LMS STEM teacher. Julie and Chris Caswell have donated money to CCS students in need for school supplies. And the Co-Order Athletic Boosters donated $6,414 in monetary funds for football helmets to be used in the LMS football program. Eric Goodwin donated $1,871.25 in monetary funds for volleyball equipment to the CCS volleyball program. The gracious continued support of the donors listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Be it resolved that the Board of Education greatly accepts the gifts as presented and be it further resolved that a letter of appreciation on behalf of the board be sent to the donors indicated above for their worthwhile and generous gifts.
Thank you, Mr. Bill Spurrow. Next, we have acceptance of July accounts for payment and July and August financial statements as submitted, Dr. Frederick.
Be it resolved that the following accounts for July be approved for payment as follows: general fund accounts in the amount of $2,553,915.48; special revenue accounts in the amount of $81,712.46. Be it resolved that the general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you very much. As the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have reports, presentations, recommendations, building reports. Are there any principals that would like to add anything to their report?
I would like to add that I started teaching when I was really young. Now that I'm an old guy, this is my 40th start of a school year. We had the best first day of school that I've ever experienced in my life. Big thanks to Mr. Shirk and the PBIS committee and all the teachers at Coldwater High School. It was just a fantastic activity-filled day. I also want to just put in a plug. Our open house is tomorrow night.
Thank you, Dr. Holbrook. It must have something to do with the leadership and the teaching staff that we have at the high school, huh?
Great staff.
The Director of Curriculum and Instruction, what have you got to report this year?
Last report, we had a smooth first week of school. Certainly, the high school had a great PBIS kickoff on their first day, but I'd like to thank all the principals for their work in putting together good professional development for their staff and their leadership teams.
Yeah, the reading scores are
They're coming up.
Much higher than they were before, right?
Coming up.
Takes time. Fourth committee reports.
Yeah, I've been gone for about two months.
We have not met since that policy committee. Nope.
Superintendent's report.
I want to reiterate about the great opening week that we had. I think it was very minimal disruption at any building. The lower you go in grade level, the more difficult it can be with trying to get kiddos where they're supposed to be and in a language they understand. And I think our people all stepped up this year. And it was across the district. It was wonderful. We've already talked about the high school PBIS team organizing the first day. And just a reminder that Fall Count Day is Wednesday, October 1st. So talking about Count Day, state and federal budget, there's still a lot of uncertainty. We have no idea where we stand in the state or the federal budgets. There's been absolutely no movement. It's become more of a political game than it has been to settle the budget with both sides pointing the finger at the other side saying that that's what's slowing them down. And we, as superintendents and school personnel, would definitely like to see them move quicker. Where Mr. Dancer neglected to talk about is a really big part of this because he has been working daily on our grants and what we're going to be able to utilize for state and federal grant funds. Even though we don't know what we're getting yet, he's still planning and preparing, especially with this new literacy curriculum coming in of how we're going to be able to best move forward with all of our services and all of our staff dependent on all of those grants, both state and federal. So he has been doing a bunch. And that also concerns, one of the topics, the headlines, is universal meals. Where are we going to be with free breakfast and free lunch? And I think we all agree that it's important to provide those meals to those kids as long as we absolutely can. And if the need comes, we'll have that conversation if and when the need comes for this school year. The Aquatic Center, we're beginning to start our plan for a sponsorship drive. Courtney Dershow will be helping us out this year with some of our sponsorship goals. And we, as a committee, have decided that the, knowing that the geothermal heating system for the Aquatic Center has never worked since day one, we're going to get a reassessment of that and see what it will take to get that up and running because we believe in the long run that will save us a lot of dollars there as well. And then to celebrate food service, Chartwells has been nominated for a National Chartwells and Compass Group Award for their initiative to supply meals for students during Ramadan. So we don't know what the timeline is on that, but it's exciting that they've been recognized and nominated for that award. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. We will, no discussion either?
No.
Action items. Request to certify the MASB 2025 voting delegates and alternates. Each year at this time, the Board of Education is asked to appoint members to the Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. So who's going to volunteer to be a delegate?
I'll be an alternate.
Well, Mr. Holbrook has already volunteered to be a delegate. And you'll be a what?
I'll be an alternate.
An alternate. Yeah, you're smart. Just jump right in there.
I know that it goes with who first and then who wants to be an alternate. We can cut that out. I'll be the alternate.
Who else is excited about the opportunity to go to the MASB assembly?
Do we cover the spa part of the Grand Drivers Resort and Spa? Do I get to?
You can put me down as a voting delegate. Anybody else want to jump in there? Claire, come on.
How many do we need?
We need three delegates and three alternates.
Well, I'll be an alternate.
How many people?
Steel is, again, picking up on his job.
I mean, I've been to the conference, but I've not been to the delegate meeting.
Sure.
Nobody goes.
Nobody goes.
Yeah.
Well.
But I heard her say yes.
As a delegate, right?
You're driving, right?
You don't want me to drive. I'll be 80 by that time.
You'll be okay. You can have an eighty.
I'll be driving eighty. Okay, we got, we got three delegates.
We have three delegates.
Holbrook, Link, and Dean.
And then Lyon Welch and Steele is alternate.
We need another alternate.
I can be an alternate.
Because it kind of feels like it's safe.
Should we flip a coin or?
She just said she would do it.
Oh.
For the spa part, though.
Be it resolved that the Coldwater Community School Board of Education certifies the following individuals to represent our school board at the 2025 MASB Delegate Assembly. The voting delegates will be Claire Dean, Jeff Holbrook, Eddie Lake. The alternates, Kate Frederick, Robert Stee, Robert or Bob?
Whatever you choose.
Steel. And Kristen Lyon Welch. Are you giving me the list?
I was just showing it to you in case you needed to refer to it.
In case I didn't remember who they were?
It went pretty fast.
I've only been gone for a couple months. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have a request to approve the proposed updates and changes to the Coldwater High School Student Handbook. Coldwater High School Principal Stephen Hope and Assistant Principal Mr. Brian Shirk are requesting board approval of the updates and changes. Listed the changes are below. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the updates and changes to the Coldwater High School Student Handbook for the 2025-2026 school year as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the second reading. If I can get to it. I think I should get a paper cut. That's where I'm going to struggle here.
Okay.
That's all right. You should have put it at the beginning. If we could let Channel 3 go, then. It's a big handbook.
Thank you.
All right. Second reading and adoption of a revised policy 5136, personal communication devices. The Board Policy Advisory Committee, along with the Superintendent Paul Flynn and High School Principal Dr. Stephen Hope, met on July 31, 2025 to review and propose changes to the policy 5136, personal communication devices. The policy was submitted for the first reading at the special meeting held on August 5, 2025 with the support of the Policy Advisory Committee. Policy 5136 is submitted for its entire board consideration and adoption at this time. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the recommendation from the Policy Advisory Committee to adopt the revised Personal Communication Devices policy 5136 following the second reading as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
I have some questions. In this new, in this new revised policy, it says nothing about whether students are allowed to use their cell phone at school activities or on field trips. Are they still allowed to do that?
As it's written, yes. At this time, yes. Yes. This, this change was to focus on from bell to bell for classes and in between classes and lunch, so during the regular school day. It was not meant to extend to extracurricular activities or outside the normal school.
Okay. Does this also mean that cell phones cannot be used, cannot be brought to class?
That is the goal, yes.
So when it says at the end here, they can be stored out of sight, that implies that they will not be in the classroom?
That's the implication, yes. And there is some room there for interpretation on an as-needed basis.
So if a student had their cell phone with them in their backpack and brought it to class, that would be okay because it's stored out of sight?
We wouldn't know if they had their cell phone in their backpack and brought it to class. However, if it became a disruption in class and it was then brought to our attention that they did have their phone in the class, then it would be addressed according to the handbook.
Okay, so a student could still access his phone if it's in his backpack, if they have earbuds?
They could, yes. Absolutely.
And that's okay?
No, that's not okay. That's not okay. That's one of the reasons that, that we're urging kids to leave them in their lockers and their cars or at home.
But that is possible. That's a possibility.
With earbuds?
Yeah.
But it wouldn't make it, it wouldn't make it okay to access their phone using earbuds because that's a disruption in class.
Kids aren't allowed to wear them in school, are they?
Right.
They're earbuds or anything?
Correct.
Yeah.
What about a smartwatch?
It's the same thing. That's why it says personal communication devices and doesn't limit it to a phone or a laptop. But it, you know, my smartwatch, I can't send, or I can receive texts, but I can't send them. But with Apple Watches, with circumfines with Apple Watches, they can use those to send communications. So no, those would not be allowed either.
Any other comments?
Nope, I'm happy to.
Roll call.
Wait, so I just, I do, I kind of see, you know, hold with Mr. Bill Spurrow here. I just, there seems to be just some questions about like, I don't, I completely understand the goal, right? Engage students, less of any of the other activities that happen than, you know, in between classrooms, maybe in the restroom or whatever like that. But I guess I just still have some questions about stuff like, you know, what about a student that needs it for like medical reasons or something?
Well, yeah. Yes, they're diabetic and they need to read their numbers on their debt account, whatever it's called. That's a medical exception.
And those are, those are the incidents that parents will bring to administration and work out of plan. You know, one of my best friends, her son has, has just been diagnosed with diabetes and he's in college. She just happens to be a nurse. So she can track his numbers on her phone from hundreds of miles away.
True.
Just like, just like anything else. If there's a medical reason or a valid reason that the parents work out with the building administration, absolutely, we're not going to take those away.
I just, I, I just, I feel like I still have some questions on this and I just feel.
Pass.
Well, I mean, just in general. But I mean, is, what is the goal? Like, is there a reason we're getting into this?
Well, the goal is to start the school year off consistently so it's not phased in and trying to, trying to enforce a new rule after the school year has begun. And the, the issue comes from, you know, when students were allowed in the high school to use it during lunch or during breaks, that carried, that type of behavior carries over into the classroom. If I've got my phone on me and I've got it with me all the time, the temptation is there. The availability is there. And that's where we see the most referrals.
And I see, I mean, I've seen the case studies from other schools that are done and it's all very positive. I get all that.
I mean, we've been in school a week and we've already had referrals for kids having their cell phones out in class. So we know that it's going to be a learning curve and we know that there's going to be an issue. We're trying to change the focus to complete engagement in the classes and avoiding the other pitfalls that come along with having recording devices or communication devices in bathrooms and in public places that can enhance issues such as filming events that aren't supposed to, you know, that carry over outside of school and that type of thing. So that was the purpose of that, of keeping them out of sight or keeping them in the lockers.
So if it's in their locker, you, you could access your phone between classes when you go to your locker?
And then you'd be late for the next class?
Well, they're not, they're not supposed to. They're not supposed to be using it. So if they're, if they're seen using it in the hallway between classes, even though they have it stored in their locker, if they're seen using it, they'll be, it'll be addressed as the same as if they're using it in the classroom.
And what are the repercussions then? Is there like a staged, however many times you get caught?
There are. And Mr. Shirk, would you like to, to share that? Because I don't remember it off the top of my head.
So for the high school, our first offense, the students lose their phone. We, they stay in my office till the end of the day. The second offense, the parents have to pick it up. And then the third offense, they go on with a cell phone plan. We're not removing students from the building for using their phones. That defeats the purpose of engagement. So they go on a five-day cell phone plan where in the morning they just have to automatically turn it into me for five days consecutively and I give it to them at the end of the day.
And this has already been communicated to the students and parents or?
Correct. So, yep, so we have our PBIS kickoff with all about expectations. And then also this whole week, I'm meeting with half, like today I met with half the ninth graders, tomorrow I'll meet with the second half, just explaining like all those expectations of not only the cell phone policy, but all of our tardy policies, our truancy, all that to them as well. So it's been very clear and well communicated at the high school level.
Thank you, Mr. Shirk.
I will say we've also been, this is the least amount of cell phone write-ups I've had in the first week of school. Ever.
So are students aware of what's coming from?
Oh, yeah. They're aware.
They know what more of education is about to do.
Yep. They're well aware. We have not hit anything from them. We explained to them that we don't make the decision. The board will vote on it. If this is, if it's a yes vote, this is what happens. If it's a no vote, this is what happens. They're all aware. They've all been, that's my goal.
That's not supposed to be our.
And today at the high school, kids are like, this is probably our last day with phones at lunch. And then they're like, okay.
But I think the other part that's important to note is that the junior high is always operated in this sense. So for, for students who are coming up through our system, it's, it's just a continuation of what they're seeing at the junior high. It's nothing new.
Right.
What they were getting was more freedom and we're seeing that that was disruptive and distracting to the educational process and the behavior process in classes.
Have we looked at like the boxes or cubbies or anything like that for classrooms or store them in there?
We've looked at it and discussed it, but never came to a conclusion on it.
We talked about it as a committee.
Yeah.
And the, yes, it's convenient. They would have their phone in there. They would put it in a, in the shoe storage pocket that elementary teachers have used all, all their years and store them away and then pick them up and take them. When they pick them up and take them for passing, though, then they're on their phone.
Right.
So that defeats, that brings that issue that Paul was saying about taking pictures, sending texts. Brian can probably speak to this about any text, Brian can probably speak to this about any text starting bites, any messages. So we're trying to eliminate all of that so that they focus on learning like you used to.
And if they're all in the back of the door?
I appreciate that. Give me for my mom next.
If they're all in the back of the door though, and nine kids forgot to silence their phone, it's another disruption. It's a disruption in the first place, but then it's again a disruption because now we're going to take the time to say, okay, whose is ringing over and over? Whose mom can't wait until after school to tell them what they're having for dinner? And then the teacher will have to look at each one and be like, okay, it's this one that's ringing out of the 30 in the door, so it'll be a disruption in the time. And then those bags, because I asked about them too. I went to a comedian and they took our phone and locked them in this bag. But like they said, you have, somebody has to unlock each one of those bags. So if the teacher's unlocking 30 bags at the end of class, number 25 through 30 is late for their next class now because the teachers had to go through and unlock each of those bags.
Or late for their bus.
I talked to multiple districts that use those yonder pouches that you're talking about and they regret it. So kids can break them open. It just causes a whole nother layer of discipline that happens.
Takes a lot of time.
And it's a lot of time. There's magnets on the doors that each kid has to tap. But when you try to get 1,000 kids through one door, everybody tapping a magnet to open their yonder pouch just doesn't, defeats the purpose of if you just keep them in your locker. I called eight different districts and got their opinions on cell phone policies and how they're working. Sturgis is probably one of the closest ones to what we're doing and they love what they're doing.
So am I to assume that what we're talking about happening at the high school has been already happening at the middle school?
Yes.
It's supposed to be. It's written in there that they're not supposed to have their phones with them, whether that happened. Like you said, if a kid has their phone in their bag on silent, I mean, nobody's going to paw through their bag to find out if they're bringing it, but also it's not a disruption if it's silent and it's in their bag. I mean, they don't have to get it out between classes, but then, I mean, that's the purpose.
But once a teacher realizes that the student is accessing his phone with earbuds or whatever, then he's in trouble.
Correct.
Why would you go into a class with the earbuds in? I mean, I know what you're saying, but yeah, they can't use them any way you can. They can't use them.
I would have thought most of this happened at the last meeting.
It's okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook is absent. Member Ryan Welch?
Yes.
Member Steele?
No.
And member Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the proposal from the Superior Ground Cover to resurface the elementary playgrounds. The administration is requesting the proposal from Superior Ground Cover Incorporated to resurface the playgrounds for a total cost of $19,125. Being resolved, the Board of Education approved the proposal from Superior Ground Cover in the amount of $19,125 for materials, delivery, installation, and cleanup to resurface the playground areas at Lincoln, Max Larson, Jefferson, Lakeland Elementarys as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
What is this material? Is it ground-up truck tire?
It's the mulch.
Mulch?
Didn't we do this earlier?
We talked about it being done before the school year, but we did not have it in time for approval at the last board meeting.
Okay.
So we had to do it at this board meeting. You're welcome.
Aren't there a lot of ground covers that are used ground-up tires?
They're very dirty.
Very dirty?
Very dirty, yeah. They last forever.
Oh, because it stains their hands and clothes?
Yeah. I mean, it's very cushiony. It's wonderful and small.
Can we take that out of the minutes that I asked about ground-up tires? No? All right, roll call vote.
Is it? Do I have it?
It says recommended, yeah.
Oh, dang.
It was your choice.
I know.
$19,000, I mean.
Okay, we'll do it. Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Ryan Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Holbrook is absent. Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can I ask? Just say motion passes, then I may ask a question.
Go ahead.
I already said it.
I'm not going to change it.
You didn't tell me that you wanted to have discussion.
I just thought about it. Rochelle?
Do we do this semi or annually or biannually?
I think it's based on, because usually we'll have set say, who's our insurance carrier come around and they check all that stuff and they do the playground inspection and tell us. I want to say it's like typically every year they'll refresh it, but if it's really bad, then they'll redo the whole thing.
When, did they do it last year?
Yes.
Yes.
For this amount of money?
I don't think it was this amount.
It was, it was close. It was close because I asked positive to check. I think it was only a few hundred dollars difference.
Oh, was it?
Because I knew that question was coming.
Yep, yeah. I didn't know that much.
And to add to that, this is, these are the companies that bid on this. There are the companies that will come in with the big hoses and spray it on and spread it out where the other companies that come in cheaper are the companies that just come in and dump the mulch and then we are responsible.
We've always had the big guy.
Yeah, first, yep.
But another question. Kids club paid a portion of the playground.
Yes.
Mulch.
Yes.
The rest of that building?
Is the ISD.
Is the ISD.
And they pay for theirs.
And that's a large area.
Yeah. According to Emily, they pay for theirs.
Okay.
Are we done discussing after we already passed it?
Need to know.
Recommendation to approve the invoice for Riedel. Wait a minute, did we have? Yes, we did. Recommendation to approve the invoice from Riedel for reconditioning the football helmets. Coldwater Community Schools Athletic Director Todd Farmer is requesting board approval for the invoice from Riedel for reconditioning 79 football helmets for a total cost of $10,344.85.
Are these just the ones at the high school reconditioning?
Yeah. Being resolved that the Board of Education approves the invoice from Riedel for reconditioning 79 football helmets for the total cost of $10,344.85. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Sorry.
How often do we do this? Every year?
They're inspected every year and reconditioning is determined by.
They're conditioned. Okay, all right.
Sorry.
I'm assuming the cost of reconditioning 79 helmets is way cheaper than buying 79 new helmets?
Very much so. Very much so, yep.
Well, surprisingly, this is not a roll call vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to purchase new textbooks from National Geographic and the online teacher platform for Lake Middle School and CHS. Being resolved that the Board of Education approves the purchase of the new textbooks and online teacher platform for LMS, CHS from National Geographic Learning for the estimated total of $10,507.3, which includes shipping costs to be paid from the Section 41 bilingual grant as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Dancer.
Yeah.
Could you tell me what this is about?
Yeah, so Becky Heaton, our new director, worked with her team and tried to determine what would be the best resource for listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And they landed on this resource, so that's why it's good for you. The textbooks will not be reoccurring costs. There will be some online, I think it's 60 bucks per teacher license in addition every year that we come back to you for.
So these books and this online program are going to help our students read?
You've been pushing the literacy scores and that is our focus this year, so yes.
Is this just for ESL?
This will be for our ML students.
Yeah, that's right.
Specifically at the middle school and the high school.
We couldn't just give them a copy of the Constitution and ask them to learn how to read on that?
You could.
This is better, huh?
This is National Geographic. They'll learn to read and learn about the world at the same time.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve the instructional service agreement with the CISD for explicit instructional training and coaching for CHS, LMS, and Jefferson. Being resolved that the Board of Education approves the instructional service agreement with the Calhoun Intermediate School District to provide 20 days of explicit instructional training and coaching services during the 2025-2026 school year, pending Title II grant funding at Lake Middle School, Coldwater High School at a cost not to exceed $16,920 and 10 days of explicit instructional training and coaching services at Jefferson Elementary, pending the Title II grant funding at a cost not to exceed $8,460. So we don't get the grant, we don't do it?
Correct. Yeah, we have the estimated allocation. We just don't have the obligation date or the approval yet. So we're able to plan for it. HRS Level 2 is effective instruction in every classroom. We've had CISD, BISD, and our own coaches before. This year, every building will be establishing basically their go-to moves that you should see all the time in the classroom, so we're going to support our teachers with those.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Was that discussion?
Any discussion?
What?
Go ahead. I'm curious as to, I never see these people, I'm a board member, but if I'm in the building, is there ever a time when they give a report to you saying, this is what we've achieved? These are the literacy coaches, right?
Yes.
You sent me that information. Thank you for that.
So they meet with the building principal and yes, they will meet with me. We actually started to meet last spring to make sure all of the instructional strategies that we would use would fit into a certain framework. Marzano uses New Art and Science of Teaching, so there's basically three categories. All the coaches said, yeah, absolutely, that would fit. Met with the building principals, created kind of job embedded professional learning so that it doesn't happen just at the beginning of the year. It'll happen throughout the year and they can practice certain go-to moves during certain months and get feedback from that. So you should see this reoccurring throughout my board reports.
Do they work with staff?
Yes.
Do they work in groups with children?
They don't work in groups with children, no.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve the consulting agreement with Mindy Hofer for literacy coaching and professional development. This is different from the previous one, right?
No, well.
Obviously.
Yes, each coaching contract's a little bit different, but this is just part of our coaching network.
She helps the same way.
Being resolved that the Board of Education approves the consulting agreement with Mindy Hofer to provide up to 80 days of literacy coaching and/or professional development in early literacy at Max Larson Elementary School during the 2025-2026 school year, not to exceed a total of $40,000, pending the availability of 31A grant funds as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
Just to Claire's point, she asked if they work with students. They won't work directly for instructional purposes, but they may model with students.
It's your chance, Claire.
I'm good. On to the next one.
Want a second opinion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve the instructional service agreement with the CISD for PBIS training and facilitation. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves the instructional service agreement with the Calhoun Intermediate School District for up to 17 days of PBIS training and facilitation at the Coldwater High School at a rate of $846 per day, not to exceed $14,382 in total to be paid for out of grant funds as presented. Please tell me what PBIS is.
It's Positive Behavior Support. So basically.
Positive Behavior, aye.
Intervention. So if a student isn't meeting expectations, you'll have extra supports to get them to meet or teach and model to get them to meet expectations. And.
You're what, Mr. Dancer, because someday I'm going to retire, you know?
That'll be a sad day for all of us.
Hopefully, I doubt, not for you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve the K3 Math Training and Coaching Service Agreement with CISD. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves the instructional service agreement with the Calhoun Intermediate School District for K3 Math Training and Coaching at Max Larson Elementary and Jefferson Elementary for up to 40 days during the 2025-2026 school year at a cost not to exceed $33,840, pending 31A grant funding as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Are they using a particular curriculum? Sorry, yeah.
Kim Fox has been working with them on a number of.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve an invoice from Taplin Group LLC for asbestos removal at Lake Middle School. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves the invoice from Taplin Group LLC Environmental Services for $9,807, of which $1,600 is an additional cost for asbestos removal. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support. Can I ask where this is at in the school?
That was my next question.
In the area where the medical clinic is renovating. So it's in the tiles and the mastic that hold the tiles down, the glue that holds the tiles down and the tiles themselves where the asbestos was discovered.
On the floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we provide the employees of the school with a malpractice attorney or not?
No.
Wasn't the danger of asbestos known in 1963 when it was built?
But I believe, what I know about it is with the, when the when the mastic and the tiles were put down, every year wax and sealer are put over them, and so it would encapsulate the tiles. Where you get into a situation where you need the abatement is when you want to do any type of renovation and there might be any disturbance or removal of any of that. Then there's the caution that some of that in the demolition phase will become airborne and people will breathe that in.
And there are new laws, I don't know how recent, but if it's covered, like there's an asbestos pipe, there's one in Brunson, that was covered, but part of it was open. It was covered with a wrap.
And it's.
A wrap, yeah. That has to be closed.
Yeah. But it's because we're doing the renovation.
Yes.
Is why we're.
If you had disturbed it, it would have been hard.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and comments. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be on Monday, September 26th, 2025, at 6 o'clock in the evening at the Administrative Service Center located at 401 Soft River Drive in Coldwater. We're adjourned.